Call to order the joint committee meeting. I'll note again that all members of the Budget and Finance Committee are present. Mr. Wimmenfield, Mr. Englander, myself, Mr. Kretsch and Mr. Bonin. All right, in the joint committee meeting, is there any general public comment?
Yes, sir, we have two cards for the joint special.
All right, why don't we go ahead, if, Mr. Kretsch, if that's all right, why don't we go ahead and proceed with the general public comment for this meeting. Our first speaker is Cheryl Parisi, followed by Wayne Spindler. And this, oh, actually, I'm sorry, this is on item one. Do we have any general public comment?
No general public comment.
Would you prefer to wait?
Yeah, for item one, is that okay?
Okay, yeah, we'll wait until the item is called then. All right, then, general public comment is closed on this meeting, and we'll proceed with item number one.
Item number one is the city administrative officer and city attorney reports and ordinance relative to the proposed resolution of various labor issues and the 2015 through 18 memoranda of understanding for six employee organizations that comprise the Coalition of City Unions.
All right, thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Santana up, our CAO, to report on this matter. Good afternoon.
Miguel Santana, CAO, I'm joined by our actuary from Bartel and Associates, here to present the product of two years of negotiations with the Coalition of Unions. As part of the direction that we received from the ERC, our task was to ensure that whatever changes were done to our existing Tier Two pension system resulted in the same amount of savings, if not more, than what was projected when that Tier Two was adopted a few years ago. The way to do that was to look at the entire contract and engage in bargaining that ensured that the resolution of that contract provided ongoing savings to the city, and we've been able to achieve that. We've achieved it in a few ways. The first is that this contract results in three years of no COLAs. It also results in adding additional steps to the bottom of the current step program the city has, so that starting employees will be paid at a lower level, but it also provides an opportunity to train the next generation of city employees onto the future and accompanying that is a letter of agreement that ensures that we have a process to look at where there's deficiencies in hiring within the city system and establishes a goal of hiring 5,000 city employees in the context of this agreement. It also provides a number of other letters of agreements to look at a number of issues, including disparity in salaries, acting pay, part-time employment, and a few others. In essence, an agenda for the next few years, so that the conversation continues and doesn't just conclude with the adoption of this agreement. In addition to this, the disagreement provides assurance that those bargaining units, particularly SEIU eight and 17, who had not received the full complement of increases in the past, are at parity with the rest of the Coalition, and ensures that all city employees are now on the same schedule, so when we begin bargaining the next time around, we're doing that in a unified way. This is an effort to try to eliminate some of the distortion that currently exists in our compensation structure. With that, I'll have our actuary sort of walk you through the numbers. Because this does involve a new pension tier, we're required, both by our own charter and by state law, that an actuary, independent actuarial analysis be completed. We've hired Bartel and Associates to do that analysis, and that that analysis be presented to council. And she'll be happy to walk you through the overall numbers, projections of savings associated not only with the new pension tier, but also in relation to the larger package of items that are before you. And then, once she's completed, I'll be happy to discuss the potential short-term impact this agreement has as it relates to our forecast. So with that.
Thank you. I'm Mary Beth Redding, I'm the actuary from Bartel Associates. I'm going to give you a short summary of the report, mostly following what's in the staff report, so it may not be in the same order as our report if you've read it thoroughly, but it should hit the highlights. The first thing I'll talk about is a small part of that report where we looked at what will happen under the proposed agreement if the current people who have been hired as Tier Two are, at the point the agreement is finalized, return to being Tier One employees, so they'll get higher benefits than they would have under Tier Two. What we did is we looked at the number of current Tier Two people. We projected that up to the end of this year, where we're estimating that there would be close to 2,700 Tier Two people by that point, and we valued what we think their benefits are that they have earned through that date, and we think it's about $18 million, and we expect that, should the change happen at the end of this year, LACERS would calculate the actual benefits and the actual amount owed, and it would be estimated to be $18 million, and so that would be the cost of moving the Tier Two people, actual Tier Two people, back to Tier One. So that's a very small and finite piece of the study. The next thing we did was to look at, compared to Tier One, going back to saying everyone's only in Tier One, how much money are we going to save by the proposed Tier Three? To do that, we evaluate what we think the future costs for future hires will be in Tier Three versus Tier One. We modeled that by looking at the actual Tier Two hires, and we said that future hires will look like these recent hires we've hired as Tier Two, we're now going to go back to Tier One. For those future hires, we estimated that if they were to be in Tier One, the normal cost, the annual cost of the benefits they earn would be 12.1 percent of pay, the city's portion of that. Under Tier Three, the city's portion of the normal cost would be 6.33 percent of payroll. So there is a large reduction in the annual cost as a percent of payroll for Tier Three versus Tier One. And we would point out that we have very close to a 50-50 split, which is similar to what most of the non-charter cities in the state are required to pay for future tiers under the PAPRA law that came into effect at the end of 2012. The next thing we did was we projected these costs out into the future for the next 30 years, assuming nothing changes, which we know is maybe not a realistic assumption, but it's what actuaries do because we don't know how to predict the future. So if we assume that everything goes as it is now, nothing changes, and we only hire new people to replace people who are leaving, either through retirements or terminations, we projected that over the next 30 years, the total savings for Tier Three versus Tier One would be $5.2 billion. That's the Tier Three part of the study. The next part of the study looked at the negotiated savings due to the salary agreements, both the new step rate structure and the elimination of COLAs for the next two to three years. We modeled that using the same methodology that the actuary would use in projecting salaries in the actuarial evaluation. So we looked at the actuarial techniques that are used there. We tried to estimate what Siegel would see in the future when they look back at the actual salary experience that is generated by these new changes, and we built that into both model, the salary costs, and the pension savings that would occur. So when we project, use those assumptions and projected forward the city's payroll, we did introduce a new assumption. We assumed that the city would have 1,000 net new hires in the next five years, and another 2,000 net new hires in the next five years after that, so total 3,000 net new When we did that, we estimated that the total salary, reduction in salaries over 30 years would be $10.5 billion. The last step of our study is something that was not in the original report and was just added as an addendum, because there was one piece that really wasn't considered, and that was, if we assume that people, we now have Tier Three, we're hiring people into Tier Three, what is the effect on the total pension costs of the change in the salary structures? So if people are giving up COLAs for the next three years, that will reduce their final pay at retirement, and so it will reduce the city's pension costs, because they're less than what the actuary is estimating. And that study showed an additional $1.1 billion of savings over the next 30 years. That's a highlight of the report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So to sort of summarize, originally, under the Tier Two that was adopted a few years ago, based on the new assumptions that the actuary has established, it saved over $6 billion. Under this program, the new pension tier saves less than the projected $6 billion. However, when combined with the salary savings associated with the other elements of the package before you, and the corresponding impact it has on pensions, then the savings exceed well over $16 billion, so, a few years ago. As it relates to the short-term impact, you know, we issue the forecast twice a year. We issue it during the day that the mayor releases his budget on April 20th, and again, when the final budget is adopted and signed. And we do that because we look at all of the expenditures and all the revenues that are assumed in that budget. We take out those things that are one-time, so all the one-time revenue and all the one-time expenditures, so it's essentially an analysis of the ongoing against the ongoing. We assume that the size of the government stays the same, and on the expenditure side, if there's any known contractual expectations, for example, the $31 million commitment on sidewalks, any increases that are anticipated in MOUs that have been signed and adopted, such as the one that will result in an increase, and whatever is actually known, and then we would forecast that out for a few years. On the revenue side, we assume that these revenues will increase by about 3.3 percent, based on sort of the trend line over the last 20 years. We don't assume another recession, at the same time, we don't assume another boom. And so, when we do that, we want to make sure that we give the analysis of when those two lines meet. When the budget was released, or finally adopted, we assume that those two lines would actually meet in fiscal year 17, 18, and then we would start experiencing surpluses. We are not revising the forecast as a result of this agreement, because we don't have all the information. We only have what the outcome is on the expenditures. We don't have the corresponding changes that we would normally do on the revenue, because it's too early in the year. But because we know you would ask, and certainly legitimately so, what the impact would be just on the expenditure side, if you just change the expenditure side to reflect this agreement, then the two lines meet a year after what was originally proposed, when the budget was adopted. The true number as to what the forecast would be, we will know once the actual budget is submitted and finally approved by you and signed by the mayor, but that's the best information we have today. So in some ways of looking at it, the worst-case scenario of this deal would be what, extending out the deficit one additional year, and then we would start experiencing surpluses. It's very unlikely that revenues will be at 3.3 percent next year, given the state of the economy, they're likely to be higher than that, but again, it's premature to determine how, changing the forecast. As it relates to the $18 million that the actuary discussed as a result of having current Tier Two employees move to Tier One, which is approximately 2,000 employees, we will ultimately get reimbursed by the proprietaries, the airport, and the port, for some of that cost, as well as by the special funds, and so, at some point, there will be some reconciliation of that. There'll still be a general fund impact, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of half of, most likely that impact won't occur till next year. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
And I wonder if we should ask my former Assembly colleague, Jackie Goldberg, to come up and talk a little bit about workforce development as well, and then we can get started.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Hello.
Mr. Chairs and members of committee, my name is Jackie Goldberg, and I've been tasked by the mayor's office on a contract to try to put together a service and workforce restoration program for the current year and through all of 2018. To that extent, we, and who we are, is the Personnel Department, the mayor's office, the CAO's office, the president of the council center representative, then AFSMI, SEIU, and the building trades, Trade Tech, YWCA, the EDW, and LAUSD have had a variety of talks beginning in August, assuming, with our fingers crossed, that these MOUs will get passed by this joint council committees, and then off to the council. The goal, as it was presented to me, was to restore city services to at least the pre-Great Recession levels, and to that effect, to prepare some kind of program that would roughly hire 5,000 permanent employees between the current fiscal year and the perhaps end of 2018, 19 fiscal years. We have, of course, first step is for us, is to have these MOUs to be passed. We've been meeting on a weekly basis with a large number of people and collecting information, and we are now, have identified between, let's say roughly 130 workforce trainees that were through a variety of programs in the past, and under civil service exempt positions, called training or workforce development positions. We have identified about 130 people who are currently in those exempt positions, who we are, with the help of the departments and the Personnel Department, trying to regularize them into regular civil service positions, which should have happened, but because of the hiring freezes, many of these people have been in so-called temporary training positions for five or more years. So our first step has been trying to identify ways to move them in, and that's going quite swimmingly. The second part is to try to figure out on a short-term basis, and the CAO's office is taking a leading role in this, what funded, in the current year's budget year, what funded positions are vacant after we have taken people who are in lieu of regular positions and put them in regular positions, what's left? And once we've identified that number, we're going to try on the short-term basis, between now and June 30th, to fill those positions, either with trainees where appropriate, or with people off of the civil service exams, because as you know, the Personnel Department's been giving a lot of exams and creating lists, because we are to hire at some point here. So our goal is to work with the WIBs, with the Community College District, with LAUSD, and with a lot of community-based organizations, in an attempt to develop and present to the council and to the mayor's office, within, we hope, you know, a couple of months after this all gets passed, maybe a little longer, maybe three months, a real plan of how you would do this. What types of training do people need? We have targeted groups already, that you've already set forward, which are the homeless, which are veterans, which are people who have had gang affiliations, Green Program, which Public Works is doing, and this program, and we're trying to make sure that all of the pieces fit together, and that we are able to not only deal with the immediate needs of departments, but to look at that report that came out not too long ago, that said that quite a large percentage of current city employees are pretty near retirement. We think that some categories may have to be changed eventually, because they require more technology now than they did when they were first set up, and so we're going to try to take a look at that in the training positions as well. But for our part, the most important thing is to get these MOUs in place. There will probably have to be some additional MOU work as we define what percentages of people will be at trainee positions versus regular, but we're also going to need some sort of commitment, if this is really going to hire 5,000 people, as to what kind of budget increases for those positions are going to be made in the subsequent years. That's really kind of the critical piece, is how much does the council and the mayor's office want to spend on restoring city services by hiring a combination of regular civil service employees and trainee people, to really predict the next, maybe 15 or 20 years, of who will be the employees in the city of Los Angeles?
Thank you. And I have a question, although it might be more appropriate for Personnel to start. I don't know if we have a Personnel rep?
We have a lot of Personnel people here.
Now, we have a lot. Who's the person that'd actually answer for the department? I see the general manager there, so maybe she can come up and talk about this. And the CAO report was a little light on info on exactly what CAO and Personnel will be doing to implement the MOUs and how quickly, so I wonder if you can either give us an idea of a work plan now, or report back in, say, 30 days, so we have a sense of what you'll be doing, and whether the positions that are suggested are adequate to actually get us off to a good start or not, so. Ms. Macy, maybe you could speak to that first, and then CAO, or whichever order.
I'll go ahead and start. You know, essentially, what we're talking about is, in addition to the plan that Jackie just presented, there are a number of additional topics and issues that we committed to the Coalition of Unions. So, in essence, negotiations haven't really ended, we just ended of them, which are, you know, a major piece, but there's going to be ongoing discussions, and the support is needed for that. But as it relates to the specific proposal on the workforce restoration, what we're really talking about is establishing strategic plans for every department. The mayor has asked each department to develop sort of a strategic plan, looking at their current capacity, looking at what the department should look like over the next few years in terms of the kind of services they would be providing, and then translating those plans into actual budgets, year after year after year. And so, there's, in addition to the analytical work that my office provides, we need somebody to coordinate that work, to create a systemic way of evaluating sort of what is being projected out in every department, and ensuring that the information's there that identifies not only what the staffing needs are, but as important, what outcomes we're expecting to achieve. So it's about, the focus of this effort is the restoration of services. We need to be able to explain to all of you and to Angelenos, how will our streets be cleaned up faster, how will trees be trimmed faster, how will we pave more streets, et cetera? There has to be a tangible outcome that's related to a service, and so, and then the other piece, of course, is that your council has expressed interest, and the mayor has, that there should be focus on bringing into the city workforce, the next generation of workers, that are coming from underrepresented communities, or underserved communities, and there, so there has to be specific outreach done to ensure that we have an infrastructure in place to hire folks who are formerly homeless, or to hire former gang members, or to hire folks who are veterans, to do that specific outreach, and ensure that once they come into city service, they also have a successful experience, and so wrapping other services around them, in some cases, that's some of the other providers. So that, all of that, it requires some additional work. You want to add?
Yes, so specifically with the Workforce Restoration Task Force, as Ms. Goldberg stated, we're going to be working in partnership with a lot of our local educational institutions, workforce centers, and so forth, and it's important that we have folks in the Personnel Department working on classifications, who are familiar with these types of trainee programs that have occurred in the past, to be able to develop something that's less of an ad hoc basis, but on a more comprehensive strategic approach, as well as folks who are situated within the hiring departments, to be able to guide these trainees, or people coming through alternative pathways, to a successful career within the city, because our objective is not just placing them in the first instance, but to provide them with the support mechanisms so that they can have a long and successful city career. So, we are recommending, again, that we look at this strategically, and look at it long-term, for something that can be very sustainable, because as people have mentioned, we're really going to be having a sort of generational shift with the city's workforce, and we're prepared to have people here for a long time at the city.
Well, that's a good description of what we're going to do, and a good description of why I was concerned, and I'll re-ask the question. So my concern is, this is a huge program, a lot is going to ride on this for many, many years to come, and we're starting off with a request of two positions in the CAO's office and three positions in Personnel. I'm just wondering if we're getting ourselves off to an unnecessarily weak start, and whether adding a few more positions might actually help us hit the ground running.
Well, I'm certain that the Personnel Director will have additional positions in her budget requests, and so, the budget, which you will be seeing in a few months, is likely to have the full complement of positions that I think that she needs. That's in my office, what's necessary, but this is sort of the initial request, in light of the fact that we're halfway through the fiscal year, the budget is going to be released, going to be an opportunity to have a little bit more time and really think through what the real need is out in the future.
So you don't think the time difference between doing it now and doing it through the regular budget process will be too problematic?
Well, normally, we would wait, and even proposing these positions, but we got work already, and so we want to be more responsive and move as quickly as possible, so this is sort of a short-gap measure. As we develop, this is not going to be something that's going to go away in six months, this is going to be really an ongoing commitment. Our workforce is retiring, over 40 percent of our workforce is retirement-eligible today, and so...
We're old.
So the demographics force us to really think about how we're going to proactively prepare for that, as opposed to just react to it year after year. So it's an ongoing commitment, but this is the first step.
Right, I couldn't agree with you more about how important that is. Could you speak briefly, someone, on our local hiring piece of this, what we're going to be doing?
Yes. We haven't outlined entirely yet all of this, but we are, because we're using EWD, and because we're using Trade Tech and the Community College basis, for many of the people that we're going to be getting recommendations for, for these training positions, I think you're going to be finding that it'll be heavily, not only local hiring, but it'll be from targeted communities, that are served by community colleges, that are served by these WIBs and by these workforce centers, and, for example, just, for example, the YWSA, which prepares a lot of clerical, trainee-type individuals, 60 percent of their people are from foster homes. So we're talking about hitting a targeted population, we are not saying, we're limiting it to that, anybody who qualifies for these positions will have an opportunity to apply for them, but where we're going to be specifically working in partnership are with community-based organizations, and with our community colleges, and our LAUSD folks, who already have programs established in communities that are targeted communities.
And I wonder if someone could also speak to the Commission on Revenue Generation and the efforts to sort of revive what was originally the core commission, and how that will play out?
I'll talk about that. So, as you know, there was a very successful commission that was created to look at revenue-raising opportunities, particularly going after outstanding debt. A whole series of recommendations were submitted, and the Revenue Sheriff, as we affectionately call her, is working aggressively to ensure that we're meeting those goals. One area of success has been to ensure that we're getting fully reimbursed for some of our disaster relief from FEMA in particular. And there's, you know, Mr. Campos, who headed that position, really ensured that. So in light of the success of that program, there was a mutual decision that it makes sense to have sort of the core 2.0 that will look again at opportunities to raise revenues throughout the city, both short-term and ongoing revenues. Because all of this, as you know, has to be supported. We're fortunate that we're in a period of economic growth. The economy has been growing. Revenues are growing by over 6% at this particular time. But most of you, whether from here or when you're in Sacuzis, so talking about revenues even during a good economy is something that's worth doing, especially if it's about our own operating that could be done more efficiently and more effectively. So we expect that, as part of this agreement, there is a commitment that the city's making that your council will create another commission similar to the one that... Not really any questions, because we've kind of seen this at great length over the last many months. I do just want to say how important I think the role that former council member Goldberg is playing is, because I think for all of us, restoration of services has been a long-sought dream. And we're right now on the precipice of starting to be able to rebuild and do that. Prioritizing that and figuring out how to do it in the most effective and cost-effective way is important, and your role in that is very welcome. And I was especially pleased to hear how you broke it down to remind us that while we want to have a significant increase in the workforce, not all of that will have an adverse budgetary impact, because many of these positions are unfilled and budgeted.
Right.
Many others are part-time that maybe could be full-time or contracted.
Right. And we have a lot of the vocational workers or a lot of them are in lieu positions making a lower rate. So some of them will now be regularized, but it will leave us openings at the training level.
We're not starting from scratch.
And not starting from scratch.
That being said, I think, thank you, Miguel, for the report and for the discussion of the substantial savings that this collective bargaining will realize. And I want to recognize the work that we've done with labor over these many months to achieve a result that maintains labor peace, that treats our employees in a fair way, and yet still realizes billions of dollars of savings. That's a very, very important step forward. And with the pension tier in particular, as we move towards restoration of services and hiring new employees, making the pension costs more affordable to the city allows us to do more in terms of service restoration with the same amount of revenues. It allows us to hire more people more quickly. And, you know, aside from the absolute monetary savings, the increase in the number of services that we're going to be able to deliver because of this is, I think, an important and too often overlooked factor as well. So thank you all very much for the presentation.
And I just want to call out both the Personnel Department and the C A O's office for the incredible work that they've done already in trying to get some of this done. This is the document so far that we've been working with. And that's since about...
Thank you.
And actually, something I had forgotten to do but intended to. I wonder if we could have a couple of coalition team members come up and just speak to the process and what they think of the result, et cetera, et cetera. I know Cheryl submitted a card already. Whoever would like to come up. Just if you could give us a sense of what you think of the product and the process and all that.
Thank you, thank you. Let me say that this very creative and forward-looking agreement was initially possible and really formed by a unique coalition between the seven-member unions of the Coalition of L.A. City Unions, S C I U, A F M E, the Teamsters, Launa Building Trades and Operating Engineers, and the Fix L.A. Coalition. And the Fix L.A. Coalition was a community, is a community-based coalition who understood the impact of service cuts, understood the impact of the loss of 5,000, maybe 7,000 city jobs in terms of the impact on the quality of life in the city of Los Angeles. And together, we came together and found a willing partner in the city leadership. And I really want to acknowledge the important partnership that we were able to forge during what were sometimes difficult contract negotiations, but we were able to kind of keep our focus and our vision and obviously resulting in the kind of presidential agreement that was, that is before you today. But it was originally the genesis of that coalition who said that communities need robust city services to enhance the quality of life and to understand that those services, when performed by city workers who are fairly compensated and committed to quality services, is the best possible outcome. The extent to which those jobs, city jobs, can come from the communities that they are serving really creates the opportunity for wins in a tremendous way. And it was that vision that drove, I think, the reports that you just heard in terms of the, again, the embarking on the decision to restore city services to pre-recession levels and to do so in a strategic manner, to do so in a strategic manner that focuses on the restoration of high-quality city services with an emphasis on local hire. And we were able to do that, and we want to express our appreciation for the partnership that resulted in this vision. Beyond that, the collective bargaining agreement also represents a number of important advances. We are committed to enhanced transparency in outsourcing. There is a commitment in this collective bargaining agreement to develop best practices as it relates to the review of all outsourcing decisions so that decision-makers can be well-informed through a high level of transparency as any decisions around outsourcing are contemplated. It was talked about the need to carry forth with the work on revenue generation through the commission of formation of a commission on revenue generation. That commission will do two things. It will look at the practices of investment and the relationship that the city of Los Angeles has in the investment of its assets and Wall Street practices, but also look at the underlying tax base of the city of Los Angeles and begin to question the way in which we can begin to develop a fair and dependable tax basis that will continue to allow city services to be provided at a high level. We did some tremendously important work in terms of the ending what were sometimes exploitative practices as it related to the use of part-time workers. Essentially, what we found during the recession, because sometimes people just needed to be hired, there were many positions that should have been full-time, regular career employees, but because of restrictions on managed hiring, et cetera, we ended up with the workforce of hundreds of part-time workers who never achieved benefits, who were precarious in terms of the lack of any rights on the job. And worked forward in this agreement to establish fairness as it relates to the use of part-time workers, to enhance the benefit structure for those part-time workers so that they can achieve benefits earlier, and to set a floor of a $15 minimum wage effective in this agreement for these workers. That's an important step forward. We also took on the question of workers' compensation. We committed that all of the coalition unions would enter into agreements with the Personnel Department to, basically, instead of litigation, to move workers' comp claims through alternative dispute resolution that will result in less litigation, but most importantly, most importantly, faster recovery times, care being provided early to workers, the opportunity to recover and get back to work. There is also a commitment to look at best practices as it relates to the city's return-to-work program so that workers can recover earlier, be accommodated on the job, and maintain that important connection with their workplace. So in conclusion, I want to just say, with the economy recovering and the city possessing the greatest reserve fund in its history, the city should be applauded for taking an historic step forward with this multi-pronged agreement by restoring essential city services in a way that I think frames, puts the city at the forefront of a model for all public-sector services. And so we look forward to this ongoing partnership. But before I conclude, I would just like to say one thing. Much of this agreement is aspirational in the sense that it sets forth vehicles, committees, process to effectuate our goals, to effectuate our goals as it relates to the hiring of 5,000 workers through systems of local hire and outreach, to effectuate our goals as it relates to serious discussion in the Revenue Commission. And it is important that we have sufficient staffing to be able to realize these goals, to be able to actually give, you know, put the meat on the bones, if you will. And so I really want to ask that this committee, both this joint committee, would support a fuller level of staffing to both the Personnel Department and the C A O to be able to support the work of this. It is our conclusion that the staffing numbers that are concluded in this report are not adequate. If perhaps there could be a report back from the Personnel Department sort of outlining their needs, I think it's just fundamental. We have come so far, and it's just essential, as you said, that we're able to actually provide the necessary staffing support network that will allow us to realize the vision that we've set forth in this agreement. Thank you.
Hello, David Sanders, S C I U Local 721. I couldn't articulate it any better than in our chair, Cheryl Porezzi did. I simply want to add that this long, cumbersome process that we've gone through in this true coalition bargaining session we had there was necessary. I also would like to, you know, we talked about these global or these visions that we talked about, I want to acknowledge that Ms. Goldberg and the C A O and Personnel, they hit the ground running. And I'd simply ask that for your consideration, your, what we put before you and your endorsement, it's necessary, it's a long time coming, and we look forward to it moving forward and forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And we haven't spoken, but I came to, it sounds like we came to the same conclusions that we might be getting off to an unnecessarily slow start because we're not staffing up as quickly enough. So I may ask some more questions about that as this conversation goes.
Excellent, thank you.
Colleagues, anybody with questions? For our labor folks or for the C A O and others?
C A O folks, me. So if somebody has labor questions, they can go first.
Any labor questions? Well, thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's see. Okay, okay, we all have questions for C A O.
We recommend an eyeball.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll be clearing that part. Thank you.
That was important last night.
And if we could get our staff folks, our C A O back up here, that would be great. Mr. Blumenfield.
Great, thanks. Although I will say, as our labor folks are sitting down, I too am really happy about the workers' comp piece. Whenever we can get the money to focus on going to the workers rather than to the lawyers, it's a good thing. You know, we try doing that on the state level, and there are ways to make that happen that become a win-win. So I'm glad about that. I had a couple of questions, just in terms of how some of the numbers are working out. You were mentioning that people with Tier Two are affected and that it's about $18 million it's going to cost the city in terms of those 2,700 people. Is that money that, basically, is that money for just the last two years or is that a perspective of moving forward?
The 2,700 is an estimate of, first of all, of how many people there might be in Tier Two by the end of this year. So the actual number will depend on how many actual people there are on the day things are finalized. But the 18 million is an estimate of the value of the past benefits they've earned at that point through the change back to Tier One.
And so does that, how does that work for the individual? So someone who was hired two years ago, are they going to receive a check? Or is this going to be something that's going to be sort of attributed back to them over time through a different percentage in the future?
So the, they will actually get a different percent, benefit percentage, both for their service in the past, up till now, as well as their future. It'll be under Tier One rather than the Tier Two they might have thought they were going to get, so they'll get a higher benefit. In addition, they've contributed 1% of payroll less to the pension plan because they were under Tier Two, and that, they will not be made to make up that extra 1%. That's part of the 18 million. The city will pay that for them.
So Tier Two, current Tier Two workers pay 1% less than Tier One workers. And so once they get converted into Tier One, they will be paying an additional...
Those boys pay additional 1%, but on the flip side of that, they're going to get this...
The benefit changes, they're going to get an enhanced benefit for those of us, similar to those of us in Tier One.
So in some ways, the part of that money is really a bonus for those two people who were these last two years?
Yes.
Is that accurate or no? Or does it wash out somehow?
I don't, I'm not quite...
So someone who's, someone who was hired two years ago, they've been paying 1% less.
Yes.
So that means they've been getting more, 1% more in their, in their pocket.
Yes.
They've been paying less, yes.
It's going to the retirement system, not to the employee.
That's right.
But they've been paying less, as an individual.
Yes, they've been paying less, they'll be paying 1% more to the retirement system.
Right. So they've had to pay less, which means 1%, where does that other, where did that 1% go? Went into their pocket for the last year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then another question about the, I got a little turned around in some of the numbers. We're expecting 5,000 new employees or we're hoping to hire 5,000 new employees. But the pension numbers, we were talking about 3,000 net new employees, the 1,000 difference. Is that because those are not net employees that we're talking about?
Yes.
I mean, we're all working on the same, it should be the same...
Same numbers. We're assuming that the 5,000 includes at least 2,000 people that are simply replacing people retiring, so that the net number of new employees will be 5,000. The net number of new, no, the net number of new employees will be 5,000, but to the city system, it'll only be three additional thousand, because 2,000 are simply one-for-one replacements of people leaving.
So we're really talking about, we're talking about, as our goal, enhancing the workforce by 3,000 people, not 5,000.
That I, that is the preliminary estimate. That's without having all the reports back from the city departments of what they need, which they're all going through now, as I understand it, a tremendous process of identifying their needs over the next several years, not one year at a time. So that may revise, but yes, at the moment, that's what it seems like.
Actually, when we talk about the additional employees, it doesn't necessarily have to be a net new employee base of any amount. It's, it all depends on the attrition that occurs between now and the end of the contract term. If the attrition happened to be 5,000 and we hired just to attrition, that would, in essence, reach the goal set forth in the MOU.
But that wouldn't increase, that wouldn't increase our services at all?
That would not increase city services at all.
No.
That would not increase the service.
The goal is silent as far as the net number of new employees.
Okay.
But that's why this group is working together, is to try to say, is that enough? And we're trying to work with all of the departments and with all of the employees' unions in the coalition to come up with, and the mayor's office, of course, council's offices, what is enough? And that's something that you're going to weigh in on every step of the way.
And that's where our service goals are coming in, and that's...
That's right.
That's really where we need to keep our eye on the ball in terms of what the outcomes, what will our outcomes be, what will our services, and how do we increase our employees to make sure that we're getting to those outcomes? Okay, so I think I understand it vis-à-vis the 3,000 number. Another question, in terms of the coalition, in terms of the pension deal, there were other unions that were not part of the deal. Is there any reason, have they been, have they been brought in and conferred with on this? Or is there any litigation fear that this third tier could have the same legal liability that the second tier has?
So all of our... So all of our contracts have a requirement that any pension changes are discussed with all laser unions. So the coalition represents about 60% of the civilian workforce. We have met with all of the unions that would be impacted and have, and I reached agreement with all of them. So this specific outcome comes as a result of litigation that's been filed, and as part of this agreement, it resolves that litigation that was filed specifically by the coalition.
Right, and since all the others were signed off on this, then the fear of a future litigation on?
That's correct.
The third tier is?
There is, there is no risk. And so the whole point of why we're recommending this is that we're taking a program that was at risk, where a judge could basically determine the outcome at some later point, and replacing it with something that's certain. And so, and if you, you know, I know Budget and Finance Committee looks at our bond ratings on a regular basis, this is an issue that gets raised time and time again, that we have a number of pieces of litigation, including this one, that bring a veil of uncertainty to the city. So resolving this litigation is significant and allow, puts us on a course to start restoring services, knowing that there is certainty behind the new pension tier.
I always like hearing that we're resolving some of those risks and liabilities. Question about the reciprocity issue with DWP and not the other pension systems such as CalPERS. How is that playing out with us?
So that, that issue, that conflict, we were unable to resolve in the context of this settlement. And so instead of allowing the rest of the conversation to deteriorate, we mutually ERB and we will maintain, we maintain our position at some later point. But this, we bifurcated that issue from all the rest of the other areas that we did have some common agreement.
Okay, makes sense. And then you were saying that we're assuming on the assumptions, an increase of like 3.3% on the, on the growth, but that the expenditures are going to be flat? Or is it, is it a slight?
No, so what, when we, when we do the forecast on the, you're correct, on the revenue, we assume 3.3% because that's what, in general, for the last historical average. On the expenditures, we take the current, the budget as was adopted, and fold in there any known increases due to agreements that we have in the future, due to commitments made like on sidewalks, anything else, and then we fold that into the forecast. And so it's a reflection of future known commitments based on the current size of the workforce and a growth of revenue of what the historic average has been. And so today, this, we know what the impact would be as a result of this agreement to make some changes on the expenditure side. What we don't know is where revenue is going to end in the fiscal year. And so it would not be accurate just to adjust the expenditure side without adjusting the revenue side, and that's why we don't guess. We could be doing that every month because revenues and expenditures change on an ongoing basis. We like to maintain the practice of doing it only during the budget process.
But the expenditure, how does the expenditure, lack of growth correlate with the desire to have the new hiring goals? Presumably are for a higher service level?
So we, we don't in the forecast assume any changes in the size of the workforce because those are annual budget decisions that you're, with the mayor. And so we assume that the size of the workforce stays exactly the same. And it, all it is, is a forecast, it's not a guarantee. You have the authority to make changes to that. So if you decide, you know, it assumes, we don't assume we're reducing the size of the police force, we assume it stays the same. It's, it's a comparison of ongoing expenditures for those things that we know to be in place in the future against ongoing revenue.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
And just for the record, because I think it wasn't mentioned, all members of the PA Committee are present, myself, Mr. Harris-Dawson and Mr. Rue. Anyone else comments, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, and thank you so much to the respondents who've been doing this work, and also the coalition who weathered a very, very tough storm and a very difficult time to come to today when we finally have some positive news. As folks may know, we've been very, very interested in this issue of local hire. Certainly, all of you in the room know that if any private enterprise were coming to Los Angeles with even the prospect of 10% of the jobs that you're talking about, 300, we would relieve them of regulatory requirements, we'd relieve them of some tax burden, we'd have a press conference, we'd close down streets, I mean, we'd make a very big deal of that. And so I think it shouldn't, you know, go unnoticed that the city of LA is perhaps about to be the biggest single employer in our region in the coming years. Having said that, the part that has seemed elusive in a lot of public sector arena has been the issue of local hire. So I wanted Councilmember, Assemblymember Goldberg, if you could just drill down a little bit on how we can actually make this real for folks who are in the city of Los Angeles at this moment.
I can't give you a precise answer, except that it is a very big part of what we're discussing. Who we pick to partner with to have the source of the employee, future employees, is a big part of it. And that's the partnerships. So the partnerships are who? They're the workforce centers. Those are almost all the targeted populations and certainly almost all City of LA residents. We're looking at community colleges. Well, the community college districts actually require pretty much, not entirely, but pretty much, that you be a city resident and even a resident of their area. So we're relying on them as a major part of this. Programs like the Y, WCA, that Fay Washington is running, almost 100% of their people always are LA city, local hire type people. So our primary strategy is to identify the partners from which will we get the source of people, to be those people most likely to have the targeted populations we want from the neighborhoods and from the city of Los Angeles.
And to go further, through these partnerships, as we look at the current array of apprenticeship programs and pre-apprenticeship programs that exist, is to actually go as far as to make it a prerequisite to qualify for employment in the city to be engaged in one of these programs, specifically targeting, you know, at-risk youth, the homeless individuals, former gang members, et cetera. So it's, it's a, it creates a pipeline into city service and providing opportunities to our own residents.
And also, we're looking at agencies that in particular provide at least a year follow-up whence the person has been placed, because we have already identified that as a big problem. Lots of targeted, folks in our targeted population areas have been unemployed so long that it's really an issue. And we don't want to lose them. So part of what we're doing is trying to figure out what criteria we're going to use for which agencies to partner with, and one of them is going to be, I believe, we haven't made any final decisions yet on anything, but one of them that we're looking at is is that they have at least a year follow-up with the person that they place with us.
Mr. Santana, I'm just wondering, is there any metric that allows us to take a relatively objective look at what difference it makes to the city's bottom line when we hire folks from our communities where unemployment is high? So that, you know, the benefit to the individual and to the neighborhood's pretty clear, and to the local merchants and private sectors, pretty clear. I'm just wondering, is there a way for us to put a measurement on how the city benefits when it can actually hire some of its unemployed residents?
I mean, the most specific one is obviously measuring unemployment rates in, in specific communities, and it's, there's ways of being more refined in how you target specific communities to identify what the unemployment rate is as opposed to looking at it in aggregate. So that would be certainly one way of doing that. But it's, in a lot of communities, you know, providing an opportunity to one member of a family or one resident has a ripple effect. So I think that's a fair question, and we should look at it as a, as a community development program, working very closely with the, with the Department of Economic Development and workforce development, so that this effort is, is part of a larger initiative in specific neighborhoods, right? And so everything from identifying a reduction in gang violence, to other crime, to unemployment, to increases in, in movements, and then ultimately increases in, in revenue and economic vitality of a neighborhood. So I think that's something that, part of the efforts that my office will be doing is, is developing some of those metrics that are community-based.
Excellent, thank you for that. Last question, and this is a more 30,000-foot view question, and I'm not asking for a specific answer, but one of the sort of theoretical benefits of a recession or downturn, and it's largely theoretical, it's a pain in the butt in real life, but theoretically, what you get to learn during a downturn is you get to discover that there are efficiencies in your organization. There was places where you were doing too much, some places you'll find that you cut and it cost you way more, other places you cut and turns out maybe you didn't need that in the first place. Do you anticipate with this influx of new workers, significant shifts or mutations in the overall picture of the workforce for the city of Los Angeles, understanding that our biggest department didn't do layoffs in terms of the police department, but almost everybody else did?
Well, actually, there was a huge impact on the size of the civilian workforce in, in the police department, and actually, the police department is probably one of the best examples of where look toward services could actually enhance service levels by taking civilian workers and having them do the jobs that current sworn employees are doing. So that's exactly what the intent of both the working group and the direction that the mayor has given departments as they submit their budgets, as they develop strategic plans, is looking at not just recreating what we used to have, but sort of thinking through what are the, what are the current needs and what are the projected needs out in the future, and what, and, and designing a program that, that responds to those needs, but also does it in a fiscally responsible way, so it's, it's done over a multi-year plan. You know, we often sort of handle the budget sort of year, year end to year end without sort of looking at the long-term impacts. I think the mayor has, has, has expressed a commitment to start planning more strategically onto the future.
1993.
Wow.
So I wish you the very best in trying to get it done.
And despite, despite the best efforts of some of us, we actually in the last few years have done an un-civilization process where we have sworn picking up civilian positions.
It is not only a better use of people who are so well-trained to be on the streets, but it also saves a significant amount of money.
Right.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually just wanted to follow up on one of Mr. Harris-Dawson's questions. I was, I was unaware, Ms. Goldberg, of this role you were performing for the city.
It's new.
I'm thrilled to hear about it.
Thank you.
I was.
It's, it short-lived, I believe.
Well, I was bemoaning the loss of your presence on the Board of Airport Commissioners. I'm glad to see that you're in such an exciting and impactful position.
Thank you.
I, I was really eager and excited to hear what you were saying about the target populations for the jobs that could be created over the next few years. And a lot of those target populations, we hear about a lot. The one I haven't heard about a lot historically, and I was very glad to hear you mention, was hiring people who were formerly homeless.
Yes.
And I know it's still early in the process, and you're identifying organizations, but any thoughts on how you planned on, on doing that?
Well, actually, Tom Coltes of the CAO's office has taken the lead on that and has actually been working with the county of Los Angeles and has some, they've worked out a whole bunch of things. One of the things they anticipate doing with that particular group is to see if there's a way after they've received some initial training to put them with a either city or county, community-based organization, and give them a chance to get really more work experience with the help of people who really care about that population.
Sure.
I thought that was a terrific idea. And so I think that is going to be part of it. We are still identifying which groups to, to target, but I think the best person to ask would be Mr. Coltes, as he's taken the leadership in that.
Great. I'd also suggest that, you know, later in this agenda, we'll be discussing putting more money into rapid rehousing for folks who are homeless, which, for those who aren't familiar with the term of art, it's essentially rental subsidies for folks who haven't been homeless as long. And it comes with significantly less in terms of wraparound services than for somebody who's chronically homeless. These are folks who may be homeless for a short period of time, who just need a boost in getting a job, you know, a little bit of job counseling. And that might be folks who are particularly primed for city employment. And so I'd like us specifically to look for sort of ways to use the population being served by rapid rehousing.
Okay.
But also, I think it would be useful for Tom or whoever to, to talk with LASSA and Home for Good about the coordinated entry system, as they're creating a database of everybody and sort of prioritizing the hierarchy of needs, it might be a good sort of built-in database in order to find potential candidates.
Mr. Bonin, so this is, this specific initiative actually started out of the work on homelessness. So, so it's, it was in collaboration with, working with Phil Ansel and his, and the work that they're doing. And so we brought this piece to tie to what's happening in your committee on homelessness. And so in, in our report that we're preparing on homelessness, there will be a section specifically on hiring, providing higher opportunities, obviously not just with the city, but with the county as well, other jurisdictions, other public agencies, as well as in the private sector. And as, as Jackie indicated, partnering with those community-based organizations that not only use the system as sort of the entry point, but also provides services beyond just the point of employment to ensure that that, that individual stays in employment and is on the path to self-sufficiency.
Excellent, thank you.
And we, we're making, that's part of why we keep meeting. We're trying to connect all of the various pieces so that we not only are not at cross purposes, but we're seeing this rapid rehousing as a method of tying the pieces together.
Thank you.
And it's almost too obvious, but I assume the, the path shelter is part of the discussion because you and I helped?
We have not yet reached out to them, but since they were in my old district, I certainly know.
Yeah, you and I sort of helped create that, God knows how long ago, 20 years ago or whatever it was.
But yes, we will certainly reach out to them, there's no doubt about that.
Great. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just first want to echo what my colleague, Councilmember Harris-Dawson, has talked about local hires. I fully support that, and, and in our Personnel Committee, Marquis Harris-Dawson has, has been a strong proponent, always mentioning that, which I fully, fully support. And I'm so excited to hear with the CAO and Ms. Goldberg, you're working on especially hiring homeless, and not just homeless, but obviously mentally ill. There's tax incentives behind it. Coming from, prior to coming to office, I worked for one of those agencies that helped get those placements. So I'm very excited about that, anything I could do to support. And I, and I really want to thank and recognize, you know, everyone who's worked on this, on this ordinance, the Personnel Committee, the CAO, the mayor's office, my colleagues on the City Council who are intimately involved, as well as the coalition of unions. I believe this is a very fair compromise. But I just had two quick fiscal projection questions, and I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilman Blumenfeld was asking, and he asked the same question I did, and I just wanted to fully understand the projection, because on the actuarial report, on page of the actuary report, it says that the, that your cost estimates are based on adding 1,000 new employees over the next five years.
Net. Net.
Net.
So that's in?
Thousand per year.
In addition to replacing people who are retired.
Right, by attrition, right? But then the letter of agreement, which, you know, especially if it's local hires, I think it's a great thing, on page 11 of the CAO report says 5,000 new employees by 2017, 18, which, and I think about 1,600 are attributed to attrition, so about 3,400 new employ, new hires, I might, I don't know, if you could just kind of clarify, the numbers don't?
Because we don't, these are all projections, right? So, so this agreement sets as a hiring goal of 5,000 employees, and that will be attached to hopefully a hiring plan that the commission, the committee will be working on as well as the various departments. as the various departments. We're trying to translate that into what that potentially looks like as it relates to the new pension tier. So it may sound counterintuitive, but actually, the more people you hire under Tier Three, the more savings you have, because it's in comparison to what they would have cost if you hired them under the original Tier One. And so we didn't want to be too aggressive in what our projections would be, so we felt that a reasonable growth rate of new hires, net new hires, would be 1,000. And so that's how.
Over five years.
Yes. But knowing, because we have such a huge workforce that is retirement-eligible, 40% again of the workforce currently is, you know, just because you're retirement-eligible doesn't mean you're going to retire, but you can the day you decide to do that. So, and so we're trying to figure out exactly what the actual demand will be, but a lot of it is just basic forecasting.
So.
The numbers will change.
Right.
That's the key answer.
So I was wondering, so if, I mean, I don't know if the actuary has answered this, but if we are successful in our LOA, achieving the 5,000 new employees by 2017, '18, which is about 3,400 new, net new employees, do you know what the actuarial tables will look like?
So if we actually did hire 3,000 to 4,000 net new employees, the savings would be larger than we forecast, but we haven't looked at that.
And keep in mind that even if it's all through attrition, let's say we lose 5,000 employees and we hire 5,000 employees, the savings on our pension system is the same because the makeup of, the makeup of the workforce has changed, right? Now there are 5,000 people who are now under Tier Three.
We're talking 3,400 new employees on top of attrition.
Yeah, so it doesn't, I guess in terms of the projection on the savings related to the new pension tier, it doesn't matter if they're net new or they're simply being replaced through attrition, because what matters is the actual new employees that you hire. What they do on the, on the, it matters in terms of our ability to restore services because there's an out, there's a direct impact on that. But as it relates to pension savings, it's not, it's not as relevant, because the fact that you hire 5,000 is what most matters, whether they replace the existing or not.
Okay. Yep.
Except, of course, if you have a larger workforce.
Mm-hmm, right.
Then you will have more people in the pension system.
Right.
But they will be in the pension system at a lower tier.
Right.
And so the more, so again, it's counterintuitive, but the more people you hire, the greater the savings, because you have more people under the new tier.
Great. I could follow up with you on that, but.
Okay.
Which leads to my second, just a projection question, based on the pension liabilities. I believe we're basing it on an investment growth assumption of seven, seven and a half percent?
The current assumption is seven and a half percent, correct?
I was wondering, what would our rough, rough range of our liabilities look like if we assumed it at four, four and a half percent, as the private sector does?
That's really a question we were not asked to evaluate, because we're looking purely at future new hires.
I mean, we could, I mean, the pension systems will ultimately do that actuarial analysis.
Yeah.
You know, Cal, the state systems are on a plan to reduce it down to six and a half percent. I haven't heard anybody going down to four percent.
I just, it was just, you know, just wondering if we had those projections.
I mean, the way it would be a greater liability, the city would have to make up the difference, right? So it would be a huge impact on our short-term, on our budget as a whole.
Yeah, all we can say is it would be a tremendous fiscal impact, and really, we only look at what's actually in place today. So we didn't do any other, you know, different types of rate of returns. This is what LASER has in place today. Now, if they change the assumption, if their board decides to change the assumption, then yes, we would have to revisit all these numbers with whatever assumption changes they make.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Mr. Ruh raised one of my favorite topics. So I have to chime in a little bit on that. I think it's fair to say that the result, first of all, is there any government entity, any government pension anywhere in the country that any of you are aware of that has reduced their assumed rate of return down into the force?
No. Because this was a recommendation or a suggestion made by the 2020 Commission that
is entirely unrelated to anything in the public.
In reality.
Employment world.
There's still some that are eight, eight and a half.
So if we were to do that, clearly the pension, the unfunded pension liability would be dramatically reduced, because there would be a huge payment from the general fund. So there would be a transfer of general fund revenues immediately into the pension. We'd have an over, over-funded pension fund as the returns actually came in higher than that.
It would be a significant impact to our budget year after year.
So if anybody from LASER is listening, just in case. I have one, Mr. Chair, I have one, I feel embarrassed to ask kind of a technical question when we're talking about billions of dollars in savings and thousands of new employees in restoration of services, but the Commission on Revenue Generation side letter, has that been finalized yet, or is that still in discussion?
It's been, the fact that there will be a commission which will be adopted by your council, so that, what the city's committing to is establishing a core commission.
Okay.
Through, at the direction of your council.
All right. I ask only because there has, as far as I know, there has never been a single suggestion for revenue generation that has been recommended, whether by Core, whether by the Coalition, by the 2020 Commission, or anybody else, that hasn't been thoroughly considered and vetted in the Budget and Finance Committee over the last four years at least. And I welcome more input, more suggestions, all of that. I just, as we're doing it, I think it would be helpful to consider the, whether the council should play a role in that as well, rather than making this an entirely a mayor-driven commission, because we ultimately are the ones who will have to be considering these revenue generation suggestions, and I just think some, some thought should be given to whether or not the council should play some role in selection of the commissioners.
Does that mean, because I assume that that commission would report to the Budget Committee, but you're saying that that's not.
Well, the idea is that all of the commission members will be appointed by the mayor, and that seven of them will be from a list provided by.
The idea was to use the same structure that was done previously.
On Core.
On the original Core.
Okay.
So it's an ad hoc commission created by your council through, with appointments made by the mayor that would go through the same process.
I don't need an answer, I just, I think it's worth considering, given the history that we've had already on revenue generation and analysis of that, so. Mr. Chair, I have nothing further.
And I would certainly agree with you that that should be considered, so. We have one speaker from the public, actually, we have two, but we have Cheryl Perici, who has already spoken as part of the panel, so I will assume unless I hear otherwise that that is adequate.
Thank you all very much.
And the other speaker, hard to read, it looks like Wax Hiddle, but I believe this is Wayne Spindler.
Short meeting. Yeah, I read the part of the reports, the savings is over 30 years with an assumption of an actuarial return of interest of 7.5% and 4%, which goes completely against Councilman Corretz, your earlier statements that you're assuming too high of a return on pension investments. So I think that's a good point, because I see it here again, if you're assuming 7.5% and 4%, that's too high in today's market. So I think you should wait and see if the Fed does raise the interest rates and if those benchmarks go up, because right now, it's almost at zero, it's flat, it's not a 7.5, 4% rate of return. And over 30 years, if you're assuming half a billion dollars of savings, you have to consider the rate of inflation, that today's dollars are worth more than tomorrow's dollars. The savings may actually be nothing by the time you get to the 10th year. I just don't think the report is very sound actuarially.
Thank you. And I'd like to make a couple motions. One, I'd like to ask that we approve the CAO's recommendation in their report, without objection, both committees. I believe that is approved. Second motion I would make, I'm still concerned that this is a huge project with 40% of our workforce soon to hit retirement age, and I'm still a little nervous that we're getting off to an unnecessarily slow start. I know it'd be easy to wait until the budget, but I think potentially it's a big miss to add a few months to really hitting this full bore. And I know we've seen with the Personnel Department, we gave them a handful of extra positions, and they've knocked out half of their testing backlog. So I would like to ask that, we ask the CAO to report back, working with Personnel, with a very preliminary work plan and an idea of whether they would suggest any supplementary positions to be added before the budget. And ask that that be, that be heard when it comes back, first in Personnel and then in Budget and Finance.
Okay.
Thank you.
And not, not to telegraph things too much, but when we take up the FSR and the resumption of the Budget Committee meeting, I'm in fact going to move it as part of, move that as part of the FSR as well to actually add the positions, so.
Very good.
So it may be a quick turnaround on that report back, Mr. Santana. You have about 15 minutes, I think, before I make the motion. But actually, the positions that we're talking about may not even be adequate, so the motion is still entirely in order, because it might, we might need to add even more. So, thank you.
Mr. Corretz, can we add the local hire report, a report back on local hires on that, tack it on to yours?
I don't see why not, if we can get that back in 30 days as well. And so, without objection either committee, that will have, direction will have passed as well.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, there's also an ordinance for your consideration. This is on the Tier Three.
Well, if, if it isn't adequate just to reference the report, then we will move the ordinance as well.
Right.
Without objection either committee, that will pass as well. Thank you.
All right.
I will return the committee back to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Corretz. So that concludes the joint meeting. Mr. Ruh, thank you very much. Mr. Harris-Dawson, thank you very much. You're free to stay if you'd like, but appreciate your being here.